Thank you very much. Good morning. Welcome to the Ordinary Council meeting of the 19th of January 2023, the first council meeting for the year. It's now nine AM. So I'll open the meeting with attendance commencement. So it's myself, councillor Ireland, councillor Johnic, councillor Tully, councillor Fechner and councillor Milligan. I'll move on to an acknowledgement of country. Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land upon which we meet. We pay our respects to the elders, past, present and emerging, as the keepers of the traditions, cultures and stories of a proud people. Okay, we'll now move on to opening prayer and I'd like to ask for, we're very fortunate today to have pastor Ruloff at Batandar, who is here with us in the public gallery. May I ask the pastor to please come forward to the lectern? Good morning, pastor. May I ask you just to say your name and what church you're with before you lead us into prayer?
Good morning. Absolutely. First and foremost, mayor, councillors of Ipswich, city management, members of the press that are here this morning and everybody else that's making this possible. Thank you for the opportunity to lead you in prayer this morning, pastor Ruloff from the Ipswich Lutheran Church. And it is a wonderful joy to work with you in serving the city of Ipswich. So thank you for this opportunity this morning. From the earliest of civilized times, God urged everyone to be subject to government authorities, for there is no authority except that which God has established. The authorities that exist have been established by God, for rulers hold no terror for those who do right, but for those who do wrong. This is why, from the very beginning, Christian communities, and indeed all, have been urged, first of all, that petitions, prayers, intercession and thanksgiving be made for all people, especially for those who rule and all those in authority, our ministers, our premiers, our mayors and councillors, that we may live peaceful lives in harmony with one another and in all godliness and holiness. So let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for having this privilege of serving the great city of Ipswich. Thank you for our elected officials, the businesses, the church communities, the families, the groups and individuals that make our city the great place that it is. Lord, thank you for civil government, especially for those elected representatives gathered here today. We pray for this meeting, help us to deliberate as leaders, while remembering that we are at the same time servants, responsible for the common good of all people. Give the members of council wisdom and guidance as they deliberate on the items before them. May every decision be a step towards an ever-increasing safe, harmonious and peaceful city and surrounds, so that, Lord, when all is said and done, you will be glorified as people are loved, so that our joy might become full. And we ask this in your son Jesus' name, who lives and reigns with you and the Holy Spirit, one God now and always. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much for that blessing, Pastor Ruloff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor has arrived. Thank you. We'll move on to apologies and leaves of absences. And we have two here. So I'd like to move for an apology, a leave of absence for councillor Marnie Doyle. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Tully. I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. And it's unanimous in the room. Thank you. I'd also like to move for a leave of absence for councillor Kunselman. Do I have a second, councillor Milligan? And I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We'll now move on to item five, which is condolences. And it's a bit of a sad start to the year with the passing of two local residents who have significantly contributed to the Ipswich community in very different ways. Therefore, I'll be putting forward two condolence motions today. Firstly, I'd like to acknowledge Kate Mandala's Augustine Heights family, who have had a really harrowing start to the year. I'd like to thank the Queensland Police, SCS and the many, the hundreds of volunteer, local volunteers and SCS volunteers from around the area. I saw volunteers from the Gold Coast as well, who searched tirelessly for Kate since her disappearance on the 30th of December. While the whole city was hoping and waiting for a positive outcome, which unfortunately didn't come, our thoughts and our prayers are with Kate Mandala's family during this really difficult time. I'd now like to move that council expresses its condolences on behalf of the city to the family of Mr John Whitehead. Mr John Whitehead was a third generation photographer in the well-known family business Whitehead Studios. John's grandfather started the photographic studio in 1883, and John began working in the family business when he was 18 years old. He ran the studio for more than half a century until his retirement at 70 years of age in 2002. There wouldn't be many Ipswich residents John would not have met at least once in his lifetime. He photographed more than 4,000 brides and countless more babies and family groups. This enormous volume of photographic work is in addition to the hundreds of thousands of schoolchildren he photographed while being commissioned to provide the school photography services for the vast majority of the kindies, preschools, primary and secondary schools in the Ipswich area. The Whitehead family donated 6,000 glass negatives and negatives and photographs to the Ipswich City Council to commemorate 120 years of Whitehead Studios in Ipswich, something John, something that was John was immensely proud of. Ipswich Library's Picture Ipswich holds the treasure trove of local history images, which formed a coffee book published in 2010 called The Whitehead Legacy. This visual record of our history will continue to provide a priceless memory of our past for future generations. John grew up in the family home in Carriguru Street, adjacent to the old Ipswich Golf Club, which is now Limestone Park. He attended Ipswich Central State School and later Ipswich Grammar School, completing his senior year in 1949. He loved all things sport and was a member of both the Ipswich Grammar Cricket and Tennis First Teams in high school, captaining both teams and was an excellent golf player. He also enjoyed playing tennis and would often tell the school, and often tell the story of the headmaster of the Ipswich Grammar School taking him out of class during afternoon lessons to go and have a hit of tennis with him. In 1955, John married third generation singer Blodwyn Edmonds at the Ipswich City United Church, and they moved to Lloyd George Street in Eastern Heights. John was for many years an active member of the Ipswich Rotary Club and was awarded Rotary's highest honour of being made a Paul Harris Fellow in recognition of his Rotary service. John is survived by his sister Denise and his son Greg and daughter Andrea, four wonderful grandchildren and four equally wonderful great grandchildren. I offer them and their families our condolences. While John may be gone from us now, he certainly won't be forgotten, with his legacy tucked away between the pages of family photo albums in many homes throughout Ipswich. I'll put this condolence motion to the vote. Those four? Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. I also move that council expresses condolences on behalf of the city to the family of Mr Graham Neville Broome of Redbank Plains. Broomey, as he was known to his mates, embodied everything that is great about the city of Ipswich, someone who quietly went about making our city a better place to live, simply by sharing his warmth, energy and positivity with everyone he met. Graham's contributions to our city came in many forms, as a senior officer in the Queensland Police Service, as a formative figure in the Ipswich sporting community, and his role as Santa in his epic Christmas lights displays, where children from across Ipswich would flock every year. Graham selflessly served in the Queensland Police Service, rising to the ranks of Sergeant First Class, in a stellar career that spanned more than 40 years. The majority of that service was spent in Ipswich District, where his deep, slow voice and ability to talk to anyone would bring calm to those who unfortunately found themselves at the watchhouse. Graham retired from the Queensland Police Service in August 2009, but his contribution to the Ipswich community continued. Across rugby league, softball and baseball, many saw Graham not just as a coach or administrator, but as their mentor. He shaped many young lives through the endless hours he devoted to promoting and advancing local sporting clubs. Most notably, Graham was a founding member of the Raiders Softball Club and was an integral part of growing the club to the largest in the Ipswich Softball Association. The Raiders were honoured to make him a life member in 2018, where he was known to many as their softball dad. Graham passed away peacefully at St Andrews Hospital on the 4th of January 2023, aged 73 years. He'll be greatly missed by his loving wife Sharon, his children Peter, Kate, Rory and Darcy, and his seven grandchildren, of whom he was immensely proud. On behalf of the city of Ipswich, I offer our heartfelt thanks for Graham's decades of service and our deepest condolences to the entire Broome family. It takes a special kind of person to give their time so generously and selflessly to improve the lives of others. Ipswich is now a richer place thanks to Graham's contribution to our city. I'll put this condolence motion to the vote. All those in favour? It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We move to item six, which is tributes, and there are none. We move to the next item, which is item seven, the presentation of petitions. And we have the presentation of a petition here. I just want to check councillor Fechner, did you wish to move this petition since it's coming from Division Three? Are you happy for me to do it?
Yeah, I'm happy to move. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. So we either move that the petition be received, or that petition be received and referred to a committee, or officer of consideration report back to council, or that not be received because it's deemed invalid?
I'd like to move that we refer the report to an officer with the report back to council.
Okay, thank you. Any particular committee you'd like it to come back to?
Not committee, just to an officer and back to full council. Happy for that.
Thank you very much. So if you're moving that, I'm happy to second that. Any discussion on the matter? No, I'll put it to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. Item eight of presentations and deputations, there are none. Item nine, public participation, it's none. Ten, matters of public interest, none. Move on to item 11, declarations of interest in matters on the agenda. Are there any declarations? No. Thank you. We're now moving to item 12.1, which is the confirmation of the minutes of the Ordinary Council meeting on the 8th of December. So I'll move those minutes. Do I have a second? Thank you councillor Milligan. Would anyone like to query the content of those minutes? Thank you. I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. Item 13, the merril minute, there is none. The next item is business outstanding, including conduct matters and matters lying on the table to be dealt with. And form number one is the delegation to the Growth and Infrastructure and Waste Committee. And that recommendation is that in accordance with the Local Government Act, the Growth Infrastructure Waste Committee be delegated power to make decisions on behalf of the council for decisions made under the Economic Development Act, and the terms of reference for standing committees be amended to reflect that additional delegation. I think councillor Tully, this was sort of generated from you raising a point. Would you like to move this particular? Oh, my. Okay. It's up on the screen if you'd like to. I think you raised this up in.
Just an addition. Yeah, I'm happy to move that.
You're happy to move that?
Yeah.
Thank you. I'm happy to second that. Councillor Tully, do you wish to speak to? I think we only had.
I think it was just, I'm sorry, I think it was just a smaller mission, you know, just to clarify that it was a little bit more extensive. Oh, that was the intention of councillors.
And I think that's proven to be correct. So thank you very much for highlighting that.
Thank you.
Thank you. No other discussion? I'll put recommendations A and B to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. Item 15, the reception consideration of committee reports. There are no committee reports because we've moved straight into an ordinary. So we now go into item 16.1, which is the CEO's Organisation Performance Report for November and December 2022. Does anyone have any questions of the CEO on this report? Yes, councillor Ireland.
Thank you, mayor. I just note that there's nothing in the report about missed waste services, especially for Division One for the recycled. I'm just wondering, it's just a question on notice, I guess, are we looking at, I know that, I believe that there's plans that we're going to change the day, but in the short term, are we looking at trying to contract somebody else to take over so that, you know, some of the numbers of missed bins for us every fortnight are getting up there? So I'm just wondering what short-term plans you may have in mind. It's just a question on notice for you.
It's a matter that, thank you councillor Ireland, it's a matter that you wrote to us about earlier this week, and we've responded and have indicated that we're looking into that. So action's already underway. Thank you.
Thank you. It's just that the residents are, you know, are starting to get quite concerned that there are so many missed bins in suburbs, but thank you.
Yep, absolutely. As we explained, it is a concern and the detailed response you were provided outlined some of the factors that are contributing to that and that what we're doing in response and what we'll additionally look into. Thank you.
Okay, I guess for me, where you've said you're looking at changing the day, I don't think you can just do it. I think it needs quite a long lead-up for people to get used to having to change a day to put that bin out. So I guess I'm looking at, you know, some way that for people that miss it, when you change it quickly, how it will, I guess, what I'd like to get back is how would you cover that?
I'm happy to jump in if it's.
Sure, yep.
Because our city is growing so much, I believe in the future we'll be having a workshop to discuss how we, and if we've got, you know, I think 26 new waste trucks that have come on board, you know, doing, looking at building two new refuse and transfer stations. So I think we're going to be having a workshop on things such as rerouting the bins and things like that. Like, I think we discussed last night at the, at that planning session, that community information session last night, that we'll have to spend a bit of time on that. Yeah, but that won't be done with us coming to council. So councillor Tully?
Yes, that's, in the past, that's always been a difficulty in changing days.
Absolutely.
But one simple way was that no one would, when the change was made, no one would go more than a week. So, you know, if it was changed from a, so say from a Thursday to a Wednesday.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
They'd pick them up on the next Wednesday rather than having to wait 10 days or something like that. So, but it's still, I agree with what's been said. It can be a difficulty, but if that message gets out, people would, as I say, would go no more than a week from their normal.
So that'll be coming back to us as a council to workshop, to go through those, the details of that in a future workshop. Okay. Thanks councillor. Thank you councillor. Any other questions of the CEO on the performance report? No. So I'll move. Yes, do I have a second? Thank you councillor Milligan. I just think in comments, I just want to commend the CEO. I see that the Inspiring Leaders Programme, which I think started under yourself, recently won a Platinum Award for the Best Learning and Talent Development Project for Leadership Training, the 2022 Learning X Award. So well done. That's great. And I spoke to a number of council officers who've been on that, I think it's an 18-month programme, who speak really highly of that programme. So it's great to see our staff and people grasping this opportunity both hands. So thank you very much. Any other commentary on the performance report? I just note the flood summary, I appreciate the detail that's been provided here on the flood recovery. In that case, I'll put this report to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. Well, now move on to a number of items, which is the disposal of council freehold land. The first one is 16.2, which is the disposal of council freehold land access restriction strip located at lot 236 Hartog Street, Barrow Island Point. And this has been identified as an access restriction strip and is proposed to be opened up as a road as part of a DA. So there's three recommendations there. Does anyone have any questions of the relevant council officers on this particular report? No, in that case, I'll move all three recommendations. Do I have a second? Thank you councillor. I'll open it up for discussion. Yes, councillor Tully?
Just briefly, mayor, these access restriction strips can't be created anymore because they're actually a title of land about three inches wide, you know, and it was, I'm just wondering whether or not we could delegate that in future. It's a very simple process and that's what's happened in the past. And they were very common in the Mortenshire area, not so much in the former city of Ipswich. And it was to prevent subdivisions where people had access to just a dirt road. Well, and they were basically entitled to do that, to subdivide a long block of land that had multiple accesses to it. So that was the technique used. And even though it was only a few inches wide, literally inches wide, they were technically trespassing over that property to access their own property. So I just think perhaps I'll just leave it with the CEO. I think it's pretty routine, sort of, to be honest.
You've got a few of them today and they do come up. Are you suggesting that we change the delegation slightly?
To cover that. I've never seen one where it was an issue.
Yep.
Unless council wanted to sort of say go to an ultimate subdivision.
Okay.
But there's plenty of these around Bellbird Park, Redbank Plains and other parts of the Mortenshire. So I'll just ask if the CEO just look at that and perhaps come back with a report at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you councillor Tully. The team is actually very much wanting to bring that to council, so planning a report as we speak, because there has been a number, as you, as you've all noted, certainly in the latter part of 2022. So we would love your consideration of that being able to be delegated to free up more of your time.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Tully. Are there any other discussion?
Yeah, mayor, sorry.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
I agree with councillor Tully. Division Four has large swathes of the former Mortenshire, so currently balloon areas in particular, a lot of those access restrictions strips. And I think for the purpose of this item and the following couple of others, it is a very administrative process. And I'm sure the delegation to appropriate officer would be well worth undertaking.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? No. I'll put all three recommendations to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. Move on to item 16.3, which is the disposal of council freehold land access restriction strip located at lot 504 Barrigan Street, Redbank Plains. It's proposed that this is opened up as a road as part of a DA. There are three recommendations there. Would anyone like to ask the relevant council officer any questions on this report? No, in that case, I'll move this report. Do I have a second? Thank you councillor. Any discussion? No, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. Now move on to 16.4, which is the disposal of council freehold land, the access restriction strip located at 49 Conway Street, Riverview. It's proposed to disposal of that. It's proposed to open up as a road as part of a DA. Are there any would anyone like to ask the relevant council officer any questions on this? No, in that case, I'll move recommendations A, B and C. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor. Any discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We'll now move on to item 16.5, which is the procurement of the George, the tennis centre. This report is concerned the procurement and recommendation of a trustee lease to manage and operate the George Elder Tennis Centre located in Leichhardt, more particularly described as lease B. And you can see the recommendations A, B, C. And you can see the recommendations A, B, C and D relate to the regulations, the amount of rent and the term there. So the monthly rent of being 1,460 for a 60 month term with no options for extension. Would anyone like to ask the relevant council officer any questions on this report? No, in that case, I will move this report, do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Fekner. Any discussion? Please councillor Fekner.
I just want to thank the organisation for continuing to pursue this. It's been a cost that council's been wearing for more than a year now and to have someone in there activating the space is really important. The city spent a significant amount of money putting those courts down there on Ernest Street and it was a bit of a boon for that side of town. So it's great to see that baseline will take it on and activate it, but also offer it to the community as well. If you look into the report, there's going to be agreed rates for community use as well, which is a great outcome.
Yeah, I think it's great, it's a local Ipswich business. They currently operate the Springfield Tennis Centre. So, you know, they've got that track record, it's, I think, a really good outcome for the community. Any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried, thank you. Move on to item 16.6, which is the procurement and recommendation to award new modular clubhouses for Einbach Park and the Jim McDonald Parklands. And there are three recommendations there. This is a report concerning the establishment of two large sized contractual arrangements following an open tender process for the design and construction of new modular clubhouses at Einbach Park and Jim Donald Parklands for the value of $4.4 million x GST to H&amp;G Contractors Pty Ltd. They are a local business and Osko Modular are a large local manufacturing site. Both suppliers are identified as local through the buy Ipswich procurement policy that we have. Would anyone like to ask the relevant council officers any questions on this matter? No, in that case, I will move recommendations A, B and C, do I have a second for that? Yes, oh, thank you councillor Fekner. Any discussion? Thank you councillor Fekner.
I know these community sporting organisations have been waiting quite some time for this investment into their clubs. And it's been a really long road and I've been involved in the Jim Donalds Parkland arrangement with cricket and soccer down there. And I know that they've been in consultation with council for more than two years. They managed to attract some state government funding for it, which shows great initiative from the clubs down there as well. So I can't wait to crack on and have it open. Unfortunately, it won't be open for the big celebration of the soccer club in July this year, but it will be done this calendar year, so I'm looking forward to that and seeing the community enjoy that.
Yeah, yes, agreed. I think to the Einbach Park, the Ripley Valley Rippers will certainly be looking forward to these as well, I think. I can see councillor nodding ahead. Any other discussion? No, I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Move on to 16.7, which is a procurement contract for a GIS system, which is an enterprise spatial solution. This report seeks council's resolution regarding the adoption of an amended tender consideration plan for the acquisition, implementation and ongoing licensing, support and maintenance upgrade and other related ancillary items of GIS enterprise spatial solutions. And the cost of the contract is $9.1 million over potentially the total term. Would anyone like to put the relevant council officer on this particular matter? Yes, thank you. In regards to the procurement or in regards to the technical solution itself, councillor Johnny?
Thank you, mayor, I would say it's about the capabilities.
Yep, capabilities of the software?
Yep.
Thank you, Mr McGrath. Please state your name and your job title, please.
Brett McGrath, acting manager of asset services.
Thank you councillor Johnny.
Thank you, Mr McGrath, Happy New Year.
Yeah, you too.
Just with the, this particular software and noting that it's, it looks like it's going to be addressed in Ivolve again. So this is an interim solution?
No, it's not, it's a delivery of a new geospatial system, but it will work with Ivolve for integration with the new system that comes through Ivolve across council.
And is it capable of integrating with like any asset management software that we have now and what we're looking at?
Yes, it is, and Ivolve's currently looking at that. So ESRI is probably used across 90% of government agencies at the moment through local councils and state government agencies. So it's a tried and tested product, so.
Yeah, okay, wonderful. That's all, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr McGrath. Are there any other questions of council officers? No, in that case, I will move this recommendation. Do I have a second for this? Thank you councillor Johnny. I'll open it up for any discussion. I guess for me, I'm so very pleased that we are moving from our bespoke GIS system to something that's off the shelf and used readily, that means it'll be easy for us to recruit people to it, but also it'll underpin our, everything from our asset management system to our rating systems, development eye and so on. So very, very happy to see that we're progressing in this way. Any other discussion? No, I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, it's unanimous and carried. Move on to item 16.8, which is a late report just because of the timing of end of month reports. So it's the monthly financial performance report for November and December. Would anyone like to ask the relevant council officers any questions? I certainly would like to, if I could call the CFO.
Good morning, Mayor and councillors, Geoff Keats, Chief Financial Officer.
Thank you for this report. CFO, can you just run us through how we're managing the increasing costs of construction and inflation? And what's the, how are you managing that?
Yeah, sure, absolutely. The pressures that everybody feels these days, the ones that we, we in council are also feeling across a number of areas. There's some comment in relation to some of our operational costs, particularly fuel, for example, is one which is significantly higher for us and about a million dollars above budget year to date. That's obviously being managed at the moment within the overall operating position, which is, if you exclude flood costs, it's still above, be ahead of budget because we do have some additional revenues, which is offsetting that from, for example, interest revenue and some fees and charges. So it's very difficult to specifically manage a one-off cost like that in the year, mayor, but that is being covered through our other revenue items within our current years. What we're going to see obviously is, particularly as we go into the budget process, will be those cost pressures on our capital budget. So things like asphalt and bitumen, concrete pipes, et cetera. So it'll be as we go into the budget bill primarily. We have seen, have you seen before yourselves, some contracts where we have been asked to consider variations associated with those and that's something that we'll have to manage as through budget amendments and through next year's budget process.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of the CFO? Thank you, Mr Keats.
Thank you.
I'll move this recommendation, this report, do I have a second? Thank you councillor Fekner. Any discussion? No, I'll put the report to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, it was unanimous and carried. Move on to item 17, notices of motion. No, 18, the questions on notice, I think councillor Tully has asked you, CEO, to get back to him.
I've responded.
Yes, okay, wonderful. Yes, so about, the CEO is going to come back to us about changing the delegation slightly for the.
I didn't mean it as a formal thing, it was just one of the discussion notes.
Response provided, a report will be coming forward.
No, I'm happy with it.
So no question on notice there.
Thank you.
In that case, I will now close the meeting at 9:33. Thank you very much.